A lot of can be dangerous things.
It's our hair.
How you get long, sir?
Pretty good, pretty good.
I enjoyed that trip.
I don't make it. We did. We went back to our Capitol.
Okay.
Tell them when you turn. We're here. Listen. Tony said, "I..." Elaine is playing. We want to get a four I. You know, get a... Get a... What you say now? Let me get on and tell you. Where the agenda?
Four I.
Oh, you want to pull it out? I tell you what. Pull... We could pull it out. And then let them do a presentation at the next meeting. But only here tonight? You know. That's what I'm saying.
You know, we'd be... Tell me, we'd be drinking.
No, James, they're not here tonight. Just pick up, pull it, and then do a presentation.
Yeah, we pull it. Okay. Good evening. Seven P M. Tonight, the Board of Commissioners, Local Government, like, welcome you to its meeting. And thank each of you for coming and sharing with us to see what it is that your tax dollars pay for each and every year. We will spend the dollars. Y'all have eighty percent fund balance, which is doing great and doing well. Hope County is in better shape than it had been in a long time, within a hundred years of it being here. So again, you're welcome to our meeting. Have a short meeting. We'll get through it very quickly. So those of you who want to go back home and see your favorite ball team lose tonight, welcome to the local government. Once again, we have invocation and the pledge by Commissioner Tony Hunt.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna ask Mr. Kirk Lowry if he'll come and lead us through the pledge. And after that, if Pastor Hurst would come and give us the invocation. Kirk?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Let us pray. God our Father, we are so thankful for you giving us first grace and mercy to see another day. We're so thankful for this season of Advent, time of love, hope, peace, and joy. And we're so thankful for what the prophet Isaiah said. His name should be called Wonderful Counselor, the mighty God, the everlasting Father, and Prince of Peace. We thank you now for government. And we thank you for our elected officials and for those who will be sworn in tonight. We pray your grace and mercy will rest upon them and grant them wisdom and knowledge to make good, sound decisions for those persons who live in Hope County. And we ask all these things now in the glorious Medemia and our soon coming King. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Amen. Thank you, Commissioner Hunt, for being responsible for our pledge and invocation. Tonight, as you look over, we have item one to adopt. Are there any need to be tabled, pulled, for discussion or any other reasons?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna ask that we pull item consenters in on Monday night. Maybe we could contact these folks and let them come give a brief, maybe fifteen-minute presentation to the board, and then we could make our decision on what we want to do.
Okay. That's your motion, based on pulling I, Ms. Hunt?
Yes, sir.
That's second?
Our second.
It means, in second, that we consent, we approve A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and J, and pull I to next meeting. All that time, consider, all in favor of what I oppose? I have it. Thank you. At this time, presentation to Commissioner Robert A. Wright. Bobby, you come down front. Bobby, you get us the stuff out in the back?
I want to...
Bobby, you might want to travel. Well, you got your name here, Robert Wright. All you need now is to put all your money in here.
I can get that from you, sir.
Bring it back. So Bobby, the local government and the board, like you saying, you're traveling. We got everything in here but a ticket. And so you pull this... We'll pull it for you. The sheriff. We'll put your money here, but we say to you, thank you for the service of Hope County.
James, it's been a pleasure. Thank you. Oh, I have thoroughly enjoyed working with you, Bobby. And hopefully, we did some good things for the county.
Yes, sir.
We sure will. And I do appreciate it.
Well, I know you did about thirty years of service with the school board, as well as with the county commission. You know, so you've done life of service in Hope County. So I want to say just thank you for the work you did on your service to Hope County. Hope County is a lot better off than it is.
Well, thank you, Kenny.
So I got one of my board members and the county manager.
Yes, not the county. Let me raise my hand.
Yeah. Nice timepiece. Very nice. And we'll give it to you tonight, but it won't be yours until we make twenty-five more pages. You know, we're all very nervous about that. Well, we just want to give this to you as a token of our love and, you know, respect for you and the work you've done with this county.
I certainly do appreciate that, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bobby, if you see a strange van pull up in your yard two months from now, they may be coming. Bobby, I wish this... What is black cat going to... Tell you all the stuff that you... Things that you've done here in this county that we've done together. I think I have eight people that you know. We know we agree. We've always been able to leave and build itself.
We let... We let that happen.
And I'm gonna read lots on this black, but I'm glad you... It's a lot more than what this black is. I appreciate you being a whole family. Okay. With our greatest appreciation for your twenty-two years of extraordinary service as a Hope County Commissioner, Mr. Robert A. Wright, you have served with a high standard of excellence and dedication to the dedication of citizens of Hope County. Hope County Board of Commissioners, December the second, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you.
Someone else can hate on your law.
Thanks, sir. Thanks, sir.
I'd like to say to all of y'all, I certainly appreciate the opportunity that y'all gave me to serve this country for thirty years. I've got twenty-two years with the county and ten years with the school board. Thirty-two years, it's time for old man to go home.
Bobby, you leave the county better than your time.
Well, thank you, sir.
We came in, we have a very low fund balance. When I came in, they had seven percent more. And look, go, what, around eight percent. They give us a fifth, but we not eighty percent to do. So you leaving the county down.
Well, you at least give your hair to... Not me.
He said, "I kept my hair, but I keep digging it out." Every time I comb it, it comes out. Right, my ones? I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
This is Ellen Mc... No, I'm wrong. This is Ellen McCloud, you come up this time to clerk to the Supreme Court. You know, pastors have to use their own Bible, because they never listen to them.
And to make them, not to make them all tight ways, take out clean and all different verses. But you use your own, you use your... Especially your name.
Please, Ellen McCloud, raise your right. I...
I... Thank you, Katie, please.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support and maintain the Constitution that I will support and maintain and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina not inconsistent therewith and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a Commissioner of Hope County, North Carolina and that I will not allow any action as a Hope County Commissioner to be enforced by personal or political friendship or obligation. So help me God.
This is Mary McCloud. Chef Virgil. Chef Virgil, come on up to the front, please. Let's go over here.
I state your name. Do solemnly affirm that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina not inconsistent therewith. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a Commissioner of Hope, North Carolina and that I will not allow my actions as a Hope County Commissioner to be enforced by personal or political friendship or obligation. This be my solemn affirmation.
Thank you, sir.
It's been a pleasure. Have a joke.
Chris? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Ms. Mary, you take the seat up here with us. Uh-huh. She gonna stay and do it. She not late. You got one other thing you want to get her? Yeah. Congratulations, county commissioner. Congratulations. One, two, three, I'll take three of them. Mary, put your side of the attorney. You got to learn the law quick, because it's side attorney. Okay. You seated? Good. Pull your mic to you. Mr. Attorney, at this time, will you please take the... No, she's late. Will you please take the chair and gather at this time?
Now it's time to elect the chairman and vice chairman for the upcoming year. Accept any nominations for chairman?
Mr. Attorney, nominated James Lee to be chairman again for this year, upcoming year.
There's a nomination for Mr. Leach.
Chairman, I make a motion that... I mean, Mr. Attorney, make a motion, chairman. Nominations come to a close.
There's a motion that the nominations come to a close. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion to close and a second. All in favor, say aye. Nominations are closed. Mr. Leach will be the chairman. Mr. Leach, you want me to do the final?
Do the final, yeah.
Floor is now open for nominations for the vice chairman for the upcoming year.
Mr. Chairman, I'm... I mean, Mr. Attorney, I make a motion for nomination for Mr. Harry Sullivan to remain the vice chair.
There's a nomination for Mr. Sullivan to be vice chair?
Mr. Attorney, I offer a motion to be closed once said, ma'am.
There is a motion to close nominations. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's do that again. Who made the motion?
Tony.
Tony. Mr. Leach made the second. And it was approved. Mr. Sullivan, you're the vice chairman for the upcoming year.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, board member.
Turn it back over to you, Mr. Leach.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Let me first thank Hope County, first of all. Whether you voted or did not vote, I'm your commissioner for the next four years. For the next four years, I'm your favorite commissioner. You might say, "Well, I didn't vote for you," but I'm still your favorite commissioner. I just took over the office to serve all of Hope County. And I do have all of Hope County for the next four years, if it's God's will, and leave us all here. Certainly, I hope the law can get over our difference, get out of the way for the betterment for our great county. I said early on, and almost branded through the state of North Carolina, and almost national, that Hope County is the best county in the state of North Carolina. Well, we go throughout the state, the county, that's what they greet me with, because I believe that. It's the greatest. It's the best. There's the best people. There's good people live here. We don't have to agree on all things to be our brother keeper. That's why five of us. Each of us tonight, I like to say to this board, to you, have equal power. You look at five people with equal power. Not one commissioner has the power to do anything on their own. Five people, five thoughts, five minds. This is why the people of Hope County has voted for five different individual people, because they think different, and we should. We agree and disagree, and we should. What's best for Hope County? I don't want anyone to leave here tonight and think that the chairman is in charge. He only can sign what this board approved for him to sign. That's why you don't find or ever see one commissioner go to jail, because he only signed what five people approved. You have to put five people in jail. So most folks don't understand that. When you... You cannot accuse one commissioner of being so bad and doing so wrong and breaking the law. It'd take majority to do that. So don't let anyone fool you with the different writing, the different ass, the different conversation. The chairman have no power without majority of the board. Tonight, when you walk out of this building, all five of us will have equal power. We are supervised by each other and take three of us to make something happen. But all five of us are here tonight for the next four years, if it's God's will, to serve all of our citizens of Hope County. So folks, let's drop the difference. Let's build one county, and let's get along. We do have to love each other, whether you like each other or not. You have to love each other. That's God's will. And that's where you need to move to. Let's make one great county, one good ideal. You went out and voted, and tonight, this is what you voted for. You cast your vote. Each of us have just one. Thank God for that. And you used it. Your vote is your voice, and your vote is your power. And who you vote for is your choice. But who we get at any time, we are to serve all of God's children, in which they was appointed to serve in and to serve over. And tonight is Hope County. And I'm not ashamed, have no hesitation, say, "Hope County, whether you voted for me or not, I love you and I thank you about it. And I'm gonna support you and help you. To our seeds and our children, I've always fought for you and I always will. I'll make sure that our seed don't be cold and hot in the season. And our children have shoes on weeks when they need them. That's what we continue to do, is build a greater Hope County and that the small talk be left to the burrs. God bless each of you. Thank you for your vote and thank you for your support. Ms. Mary, let's say something in Hope County tonight.
Well, I do honor the Lord on tonight. I would like to say, you know, thank you to all the supporters, all of the voters. I could not have done it without your support, especially your prayers. I'm here for the citizens of Hope. I want to do right by the citizens. And I ask that you continue to pray for me, that I make the right decisions. And to God be the glory. I love you all. Thank you.
All right, let's go to work. Let us, at this time, give the oath to the raised beings of our clerk to Supreme Court. Ms. Ellen McCloud, you please come. Yes, sir.
Can we have her family to...
Yes, sir. Sir, certainly. Please allow our family to come in. Yes, ma'am, right there with you. You got on. It's Tony Al, Chris. Push it out in, Tony. Yeah. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I state your name, please. Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution and laws that I will support of the United States. This be my solemn affirmation. I state your name. Do solemnly and sincerely affirm that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the power and authority which are and may be established for the government thereof. And that I will endeavor to support, maintain, defend the Constitution of the said state not inconsistent therewith to the Constitution of the United States. With the best of my knowledge and ability, this be my solemn affirmation. I state your name. Do solemnly affirm that I will faithfully and truly according to the best of my skills and abilities execute the duties of of the office of registered deeds for the county of Hope and all things according to law. This be my solemn affirmation.
My Mrs. Lane, we can let Mr. Jerry take all of y'all out and supper. And let me know when y'all out till I'm calm. I'll supper. He said supper. He said subway. Love, have you seen her? All right, very, very quick meeting tonight. Let's finish up our meeting. Mr. Attorney, at this time, we have public come in.
There's two. Vandy Nimal.
Good evening. I think I'm gonna dampen the mood here, but...
Don't do it. Don't do it.
I had no idea, okay? I did not see the agenda till I got here, but congratulations to all of you. I would like to say, my name is Vandy Norman. I live in the Turnberry subdivision off 4L Burke Dale in the 401. This is not my first time in front of you guys. It's probably my fourth or fifth. But I wanted to bring something to your attention. First of all, in April of 2024, the HOA, Homeowners Association, was turned over to the homeowners from Floyd Properties. Mr. Floyd had completed building and selling all of the homes in our subdivision that he owned. I was elected as one of the board members to sit on the new HOA. I'm the secretary and treasurer currently serving. In the months that have followed since we have been elected as board members, it was discovered that there was improper use of the HOA funds prior to us being elected by Mr. Floyd. The HOA funds have been distributed to pay for sod for new homes that were being built in other phases, which is not a funds to be used for that. When our property manager, Little and Young, discovered this, they had informed Mr. Floyd and the landscaping company that was performing these services that those invoices would not be paid because the HOA is not responsible for sodding those properties, that Mr. Floyd would be responsible for that. At the time, those invoices were itemized and detailed. From that moment forward, all invoices from that landscaping company came unitemized. And because Mr. Floyd was in charge of all of the invoices, and he was in charge of the HOA, he approved anything to be paid. The management company had no say on how those invoices were paid, only that they were paid. What happened was that as of August, September of about 2022, from what I have researched, and I'm going to be doing further research in the next couple of weeks at Little and Young to go back further in financials, but it was discovered that for over the next two years, and it will continue now from 2024 into 2025, invoices have been being held, and they've been not being paid in the amount of approximately $30,000. Mr. Floyd was aware of this, and he acknowledged that the HOA was essentially in debt. However, on paper, you're not going to find that because invoices have not been being held. So what has happened is now the homeowners are now responsible for this extraordinary amount of debt that we all now have to do a special election or a special service to get these funds paid for. Because as of right now, we don't even have enough funds to hire an attorney to help us fight this. Right now, we're in a position where we have no funds as of August of this year. None of our invoices have been paid to our landscaping company, our property management. The only thing that we've been able to afford has been paying our electric and our water to the Hope County. We're asking that the Board of Commissioners be aware of the situation and also that we can only assume that we're not the only subdivision, only because comments have been made that other subdivisions are having invoices being held as well. You know, be cautious in approving any new developments by Floyd Properties until we can get this issue resolved. We are going to also... I'm sorry?
Your three minutes are up.
I'm sorry?
Your three minutes are up.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Chairman, I would like to extend her time. This is very important. We've done it in the past.
I appreciate that.
I'd like to hear it all.
The only thing I just have is, you know, until this issue is resolved, currently, due to the extreme debt that we've been blessed with, like I said, we're unable to afford attorney for us to do that. We're unable to afford forensic account... We're unable to afford forensic accounting to go back any further, to have an actual accountant do any type of modification or any type of forensic accounting. We've only been, we've been, we've got prices, it's about $6,000 for that. And as far as for the attorney, it's unknown. So at this time, just asking that the Board of Commissioners be aware of this. You know, I don't know, obviously, it's, you know, you guys don't, you only approve properties you're going on. You can't do anything on this issue of this debt that we're now in debt for. But I think it's important to make sure that everyone understands that this is a position that we've been put in as the 272 homes that are in this area, you know, some people just closed on their house last week. They're also gonna be responsible for this debt. What we've done as HOA board members is that we actually, there's three of us. And what we have done is we've actually cut off services. We've done a lot of things to help save money, to cut back on our landscaping, to cut back on trash services, to cut back on things.